Call the meeting order, I'll do the pledge of allegiance. Justin Carl lead us a man.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have they only do the roll call?
Justin?
Present.
Alexis?
Present.
Jessica? Matthew? Shai?
Here.
Next item on agenda is approval of minutes, April eighth, two thousand twenty-five. Counsel, if you have any questions or concerns or... Justin makes a motion to approve.
Alex.
Next second.
Justin?
Yes.
Alexis?
Yes.
Shai?
Yes.
Next item on agenda is public comment, does anybody in the audience have anything to say, anything at all? Good, bad, yes. Yes, sir.
Just a request, maybe a proposal, um, I think for...
Please state your name and address for the...
Sorry, Ryan Lee Clark.
Sorry, we all know you.
I'm sorry about that, that's what's going on, but, um, what's that?
Yeah, I guess.
Oh, two-two-six-one North Center Street, uh, so, um, in terms of, just a thought, and I'd like y'all to think about it, is, um, in terms of public engagement, being able to know what's gonna happen at these council meetings, also, I think, for the council members, uh, I don't know how early y'all get the packet or not, but I would propose that, that we have like a one week, uh, or sometime, rather than the day of or two days before, that the public as well as the council get the packet, anything but, if anything doesn't make it in before then, then it's the next council meeting that they get to discuss that, because I think as a citizen, to go over those things, especially today, is to read a hundred and thirteen pages or something, um, that it takes more than, you know, the day of or the day before, whatever, to get the packet, to have good engagement for people to know what's going on, for our council members to hear what we have to say, and people to be able to come in and voice their opinions, so, just kind of a proposal to maybe make some changes on how are we, you know, the packets are available, to probably to see what's gonna go on with the city council meeting.
Well, uh, just to answer your question there, we usually try, uh, we've done a lot better in the last three years of getting that packet out earlier.
Yeah, I mean, it's better than what it has been, for sure.
And we usually try to get it out, Tiffany always tries to get it out, three days at the minimum, if not, a week in advance. Sometimes we don't get to do that, uh, this month was, was one of them, but due to the, uh, new legislation passed, we have to have it out three days prior, I think in August first, when it goes into effect, the new Freedom of Information Act, which we already almost comply with that as, as it is, so, like I said, most of the time, most of every month, we do get it out. Uh, just this month, we were waiting on other, other pieces of this to fall in.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking about if, you know, hey, we have a new subdivision that's going in next to a bunch of people or whatever, and it's three days before, the ability to kinda get word out to neighbors to discuss things and have them whatever, I think it's, it's a pretty short turnaround to say that we can have a good engagement from our citizens in the town with the city council and all the things like that that we need, have done to make good representative votes in the city councils to just, uh, I mean, I, I think it would go a long ways to say, maybe making some kind of thing, whether it's a week, five days, something enough topic, kind of gather our thoughts, gather, kind of people together to say that, hey, this, we oppose, or we approve this, or whatever it might be, so, it's just a suggestion.
No, I agree with you.
I agree, I was just gonna add a couple things to what you said, so I agree as well, I think it makes sense, and I would like to see more engagement from our citizens, um, we do have a Facebook page that is for citizens of you, use social media, I love you, you know, try to grow that with our citizens, and also Tiffany is working on our hypo highlights, getting better so more people could get signed up, 'cause she does email to you, and I know that's, a lot of people do use email too, so I think that we're trying around about getting more online now, 'cause I agree with you too.
And I think too, uh, it might be helpful where, you know, they have, you have the official city, city council docket for what's gonna go on, but when it says, you know, resolution for something to make your current center, well, I don't get much from that in terms of, you know, trying to understand, well, what are we, what are we talking about tonight? Maybe just kind of a briefing of, hey, this is kinda...
It's, it's not a resolution, it's just a presentation.
Well, whichever, I'm just saying, kind of what's going on at the next city council meeting, and that way it gives the public an idea, well, is this something I need to be at or not be at, or whatever, I just...
Well, we'd like for you to come to everyone of them.
Well, I try to, so... But appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Justin, you got anything to say? All right, I'll close the comment period. Next item on agenda is new business, a presentation by Scott Van Hook with the Ford.
So... Well, I can't think at the same time and talk. So, thanks to this council and all Tiffany's hard work over the past year or so, um, we're presenting you with, uh, all the stuff that you get for Free City USA, uh, Hyphol, I know is the newest Free City USA in the district, uh, in our district six, which covers twelve counties, and I'm almost positive that Hyphol's the newest one in the entire state. Uh, we have more tree cities up here than just about anywhere else, and we have some of the oldest tree cities in the county, I mean, in the state. And so, this is all the stuff that you get, we have signs, we have flags, uh, we appreciate everything you do as far as, uh, uh, when we did the Free Tree Fridays, uh, I come and help, what's her name, to, uh, do the, you know, the Walton Foundation stuff, so we present you with plaques, street signs.
What's the tree city, what, what does that mean for us?
It means a lot of things, um, it demonstrates your commitment to trees in the, in the city of Hyphol. Uh, there's a two dollar per capita, um, fund that's our, you know, near budget, um, two dollars for everybody in the, in the town, that, that money is spent on trees, that's minimal. Um, there's tree ordinances now that, that recognize Hyphol as a tree city USA, um, it's, uh, advertised all over the country. And a lot of times, what we're seeing, particularly in North Los Angeles, people who are coming in, they wanna know, and developers, if, uh, if a city is tree city USA, they know that, that demonstrated that commitment, that's not just, uh, to, not just the development, but, but also being able to keep, uh, you know, keep the trees, keep the education for not just, not just the beauty, but for all the health benefits, um, there's economic benefits to it as well, some businesses simply want to come in, into towns that are, that are recognized as tree cities, uh, plus it helps for us, all, all the giveaways and everything else that we can do.
And Scott helps us out lots on, uh, we've had a handful of trees as he's come up and looked at and deemed, uh, unsafe, you know, unhealthy, dead tree, you know, he's, 'cause he's a licensed arbitrator, you know, otherwise we have to pay somebody to come do that, so we can cut it down on the city land, you know, and Scott, since we're, he's, uh, we're tree city, he comes after, he'll, he'll do that, I mean, for free, pretty much, yeah.
Yeah, he's helped me a lot with my trees.
Yeah, I called her what's her name, 'cause that's what she, I can't remember her names, she came up.
Yeah, I know, and I can remember it, you know?
He always helps me with all my trees, I love it.
You bet. Um, so, this is, like I said, this is for anybody who can't see it, that's the street signs that you get.
Awesome.
Get a couple of those, and then we will do recognition of, new recognition every single year, um, this plaque, named Hyphol on it. Got a four by six flag, uh, yeah, just all kinds of cool stuff, but, um, and again, like I said, it's all her hard work and doing all the paperwork and the link work and stuff, and for, for being able to vote in as a, as something that you wanted to do, something that we really push hard on, uh, in the forestry, and it's also recog, you get recognition from the Art Day Foundation. They actually, uh, administer the program nationally, and we administer the program in the state, like, and I administer the program on a district level, so, um, that's, it's a pretty big deal, and we're super proud of it, and you guys get the newest, coolest, because they redesigned everything, so y'all are the only ones that have a lot of this stuff, so, uh, it's, it's really cool, and we really appreciate it.
Scott, we appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you Tiffany for getting it all, all the paperwork and all that too. Thanks, Scott.
Yeah.
Next item on agenda is resolution number two-zero-two-five-dash-eight, I'll let Jake read that.
City of Hyphol, Benton County, Arkansas, resolution appointing council member to position two, ward three, city council for the city of Hyphol, Arkansas.
We got three applicants here, and hopefully they all showed up here, and we'll go... Elise, Elisee Brown? Elise? Step up, told you, please. And we'll just have you, uh, state your name, your address, where you live, uh, and just kind of tell us a little bit about you and why you wanna be on the council.
Okay, Elisee Brown, eight-one-six Northwest Sixty-third Avenue in the Silver Meadows neighborhood. Um, I have a background in molecular biology, so, uh, my approach to many things in life are to follow protocol, gather data, analyze facts before making a decision, and I think that's really important, especially on a team effort, to make sure that all the voices are heard, everything's looked at before decisions are made. My goal for city council is to really listen to residents, to hear their concerns, or if they have ideas on improvements, and really advocate in front of them.
I think you, council guy, any questions? Thank you. Kyle Huffman?
Mary Dennis?
All right.
My name's Kyle Huffman, one-two-five-two, Botsky Lane. Um, I've lived in the city for well over twelve years now, um, I've invested in the city in many aspects, uh, uh, provided a service at the fire department here for about ten years, um, I'm also on the police department part-time, so I've put my time in here, I've seen the city grow over this timeframe, I've seen us expand, um, I really enjoy government. Our founding fathers found it was pretty important that they made us some of the first documents that we have in organized government, and with rights that we have to uphold, and being in a position as this, I feel like, I think, we, we have a duty and a privilege to be able to set up here and make decisions on behalf of everybody else, um, that's a big responsibility, I don't take it lightly, and I do want to listen to the people, and I do, with the majority of these people, tell me that they would like to be for the city, and we're growing at such a rat rate, I feel like we need to have a responsible growth plan, and I think that we're enabling that as a council, however, that's just a goal that I have, and to provide even more of a service for the city, and to continue to live here and keep us safe, do things moving forward.
Thanks, Kyle, and council guy, anything, Kyle? Thank you, Kyle. Rebecca?
Hello, I'm Rebecca Crowley, I live at six-six-zero-one Northwest Orchard Street, I also live in the Silver Meadows neighborhood. I have a background in education, and I have a passion for service, I love my family, they're my priority, and I just want to continue and help contribute to a safe community that is growing, and have a great community engagement and listening to our citizens, and it would be a wonderful opportunity to be able to help, uh, our community grow in the right direction.
Thank you. Council guy, anything? Council, if you guys wanna make a motion to go into executive session to discuss these candidates, I just need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Shai makes motion.
I'll second.
Next second.
Justin?
Yes.
Alexis?
Yes.
Shai?
Yes. Mayor, can you call me in?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Called meeting back to order.
Do we have a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion nominate Kyle to position.
Next motion nominate Kyle Huffman to the council position. We'll have a second.
Second motion.
Just in seconds.
Justin?
Yes.
Alexis?
Yes.
Shai?
Yes.
Kyle, thank you. Come on up here. I want to thank each and everybody that's applied for this. We last two spots we've had, you know, we've had multiple people put in for it and it's a tough decision for the council to make. Each and every one of your good qualities qualities. We always have spots open, whether it be planning commission, water, sewer board, and I know you guys have put on your applications that you would be doing that. And we have a spot open up. We keep your guys' resumes here in office. So I just want to thank you and the council wants to. We all just want to thank you and we really enjoy more and more citizens showing up. Over by Alexis.
Yep. Mayor, can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say, like as a council member, like, thank you so much for you guys all coming up here. I decided to do this and it was very nerve wracking as well. I do want to say, please, please stay involved in our community. It's really, really hard for us to make this decision and you guys are all great. Candidates, I think that you all do great serving in our community and helping us bring our community closer together so that we can, you know, have more people diverse around our city. So please, please keep coming and thank you so much for coming up there because I know it's not an easy thing to do.
Alrighty, next item on the agenda is resolution number two zero two five dash nine. Let Jay read it.
Resolution authorizing the execution of a service contract with Northwest Arkansas Conservation Authority.
Dustin, you have my permission. Talk to council about this one.
One of the final steps, we've been working on it for seems like a decade. I've only worked here for three and a half years. So one of the final steps is signing the contract with NACA. Once that's done, we could officially send wastewater to the facility and save our little treatment plant for for information. So that project is is underway. It's getting closer and care electric was out there marking the ground for the pets today, which means they're probably still two weeks out from getting the power upgraded at the blood station. So they move on to the electrical side of the upgrade, which is going to be really intensive. So hopefully they'll once we get the contract signed, contractors get electricity, we can get the ball rolling. Finally, put this chapter behind us. You guys have any questions on the contract? Pretty standard. Jay looked over as a it's the same contract that we set you that you want snack of.
That side. As our lawyer, given this fifty pages long, we've read it. Is there anything that stood out to you that we worry about?
No, I've I've been through this process before with NACA and they went through this contract. And I believe it's in the city's best interest to execute the contract and proceed in accordance with its terms. Thank you for your counsel.
That's good for me. I was worried about the same thing as well.
I think the only question that I had about the the contract was the limitation on flow. We were assured by by Mike Neal and their attorney that, you know, they expect and anticipate cities to grow and that anticipate that anticipated flow would start was just an anticipation. So it shouldn't affect our rates.
So we don't see our rates changing for our citizens.
No, it shouldn't affect. It shouldn't affect if if we so basically in tune with wastewater, if you send more than you're allotted to send, they can send a surcharge. And they they assured me that there would not be a surcharge for flow limitations as far as normal dry weather flow. But as far as the the wastewater rates right now, I'm not, I'm not sure like the wastewater rates are in effect at least until twenty six. And they'll be revisited and we should have a clear grasp on what NACA is charging us for for wastewater disposal.
Every so many years or when we do a big project, the state law requires us to have an audit of our system. And then if that if that audit comes back and says we have to raise our rates, we have no, we have no choice. That's our, it's our law that.
That would be, that would be no matter if we were with them or not.
Yes. But then if if they have at least six months of data, which we should, we should have close to six months of data by the time we do our next race study, then they can figure all that out and we could be in accordance with access of files.
When do we start using that?
As soon as the contractors are done, Justin. Contract date was extended sixty days from February twenty eighth. I think they're getting ready to fill out another change order because of the care electric backlog. But as soon as construction's done, I can't wait to turn them off.
And that's this line will service the south end of the city or the whole city?
But south end of the city with possibility to service the north end, portions of the north end of the city. We have a station one, so we would just be paying for electricity to pump it from those station one to the station two. And then electricity from both stations. But yes, we, there is potential to serve the whole city with this line.
Up to how many root pops do you have?
I don't know. I just guesstimate, but I'd rather not.
But for those foreseeable growth for the next five years.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Based on for you personally, based on the knowledge of what we've already been doing and what we do have in the works, you feel like this is the most responsible way for us to manage that?
The center ten indicator cannot take any more wastewater. So yes, this is our only option, even if it wasn't the best option. It's our own.
Anything else? Yep, I just need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Alexis makes a motion.
Second.
Shaw's seconds.
Justin?
Yes.
Alexis?
Yes.
Shai?
Yep.
Who said yes?
Yeah, motion pass. Yeah, sorry. Your new Kyle, sorry. Next item on the agenda is department committee reports. I know Chief Webb's got something, presentation? Okay.
Hey, good evening, council. Hey, so we have been leasing a road grader from Tim Opie for two years now. We did the map on it. We put over six hundred hours on it in two years, which is more time in a road grader than I felt saying five years. We did budget seventy five thousand dollars to continue that lease this year. He has offered it to sell to us for a hundred and three thousand dollars. We had seventy five thousand budgeted to leasing for this year. I tried to find some comps on comparable same unit. The problem is that it's hard to find with such low hours. This machine's got less than five thousand hours on it, which is unheard of for the year that bottom that is. I would like your permission to go ahead and make this purchase. That the guys know this machine they've been on for two years and that says something in itself. We haven't had any issues with it besides changing blades out and it's actually getting worse and used to some shit. So my ask to you is instead of spending seventy five thousand dollars to lease it forward to the year, can I just ask for more money? Just make that purchase. Chris, did you want to speak on that?
So obviously everybody in the community, everybody around here knows the stuff going on the next day. So if if it doesn't work out in our favor, we'll have to find avenues to cut the budget. You know, to to still operate and still to provide the services that we got without any city sales tax for three to four and a half years of those airport store. Demand that we escrow all of it. Which, so this is one avenue I've looked. We just, we bought all the easements for the NACA line, which is totaled two hundred roughly fifty thousand dollars still in there. We just got that checked back, which all I was going to do is put it back in the savings. But now's an opportunity for us to take kind of three out of that, put the rest in savings and purchase this road grader. And that will take a big chunk out of things that we have to cut. We we've got seventy five in there and I think there's twenty five for another line on the road grading.
Yes, sir.
So it's basically, it's basically a hundred dollars. You know, so basically we're we're spending three thousand more dollars. We're going to buy a road grader. Then next year we don't have to, we don't have to have a hundred thousand dollar line.
Right. And the citizens that live on our roots expects more frequency upgrading because we have the machine in our own possession? Or does it not really change that?
It's been in our possession for for the last two years and we grade as the weather allows and as the the time allows. But like I say, the the city has seen more road grading the last two years than it has the last ten.
Agree with you and recognize that I just wanted to, there was any benefit by owning it versus leasing it. If it gave us more access, more frequency.
Honestly, he asked me, it's like, so six hundred, we put six hundred hours on it. That's what you said. And so we put six hundred hours on it. Were we paying to lease it based on the time we were using it? Or is it kind of a thing? Okay, so and if we we agreed to lease it for sending about thousand this year, what did we spend last year? Same thing.
Hey, Dustin, once we lease it or once we buy it, what's what's maintenance on this thing?
Once we buy it, what's the maintenance on it?
So the the annual maintenance on it is fifteen thousand dollars and that's just oil change filters going through hydraulic lines. Blades are pretty cheap. They're probably two thousand dollars a set and we typically purchase those at least once a year regardless.
So those items we were already doing as lease, like we're releasing it.
Are we, sorry, I missed that. Are we paying for the maintenance right now?
Yes.
So we're paying seventy five plus fifteen essentially.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay, and then so two years down the road, right? You said it's seventy, we pay seventy five right now. You said we will buy it for one thirty?
What? No.
One oh three.
One oh three.
One oh three.
Oh, one oh three. Okay, so a year and some months it would have paid for itself and then we're just paying the same fifteen thousand dollars we're we're paying every year for maintenance anyway.
Yes, sir.
Are there, are there any other associated costs?
So it does have the option for a for a ripper on the back of that road grader. I think that would be beneficial on some of these more rocky streets because it's just pretty, it's just, it's a tiller on the back that'll till up as as we go. And kind of freshen up the material so that in these rocky areas where we can't really get any kind of material to stick, we can just tear it up and then, you know, feed it back down and hopefully get some some.
But that is, that is only if we decide to to buy it, meaning it's not a must have.
It's it's not a must have, but it it is something that I would probably be budgeting for in the next two years if budget allows. Yes, sir. It's twenty two thousand.
Got it. I mean, Dustin, I think to me it sounds like this is a cost savings in the long, in the long term for the city and I appreciate you doing the the work and looking into it and finding out what it would cost.
Excellent. Do you have a clean motion to do this?
If the if the council's interested in proceeding, what I'd like to do is kind of get a really a motion for me to bring back the resolution because of the amount we'll need to like pass a resolution, wait in bid process and approve in the bid for the next meeting.
So I'll make a motion to waive the bid process and bring a resolution.
I will second.
Bring it back for a formal vote at the next meeting.
Just makes motion. I'd say second. Thank you, Dustin.
Can you send me the details, the make model year? And and is the owner old key construction or exactly how it's presently titled?
Okay.
And now all that to me, so I can get all the information. Thank you.
Before you walk away, since we're talking on roads.
How's it, can we vote on this?
Oh, we gotta vote. So don't walk away.
Justin?
Yes.
Alexis?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Shai?
Yes.
All right, there's a stretch of rocky company road that is like around a corner there up until where the county road takes over. That I think the county and the city don't know who belongs to and never gets worked on.
It's it's totally ours.
Okay, well then, we'd love for you to work on that. You've done a lot of work on the other parts and that's all.
It's on our list and I think I need to visit with you and ask for a little more road easement and work that out. We need to make it a little bit wider.
There's there's two problem lines.
And I'm going to ask them. So if I ask you for for four foot, I'll only ask the other guy for five foot. Oh, yes, we, that that section does need to be addressed and if it is on our list, the the question is, what's the best way to do it? Does all that water off that hill that feeds your pond is atrocious to that road? And last time we tried to put material in it, I think it all ended up in your pond. So we may just drag your pond. But yes, it is on our list.
Okay, all right.
Yes, sir. Any other questions concerning public works?
It did make the sound disrespectful.
No.
The word grab was out of my mouth for today. And so thank you for the continuous.
Yes, sir.
It is much more frequent than it's ever been since the last, like, twenty years of this. So thank you for trying.
I will pass the word on. Thank you, sir.
I think, thank you, Dustin.
Thanks, guys.
Now's a Black's turn?
Yes.
Like we don't got, just.
I'll be quick.
Thank you. I just have a presentation I want to go over. We have been discussing the police department growth potential and things like that over the past couple of months. And I've kind of explained to you, but this will help give you a better snapshot of what I'm talking about and what I've been referring to when in regards to how busy we are and what our future needs will be, things like that. By no means is this a push.
Referring to when it, in regards to how busy we are and what our future needs will be, things like that. Um, by no means is this a push for you guys to feel pressured to. To make staffing changes. I know we're not in a position to do that. I understand the, the city's stance right now. I just want to get ahead of this. And I want to keep the council and the citizens informed about how we're operating and give you guys the opportunity to. Give uh, feedback and let you know that we're working to make sure that we can navigate this. Situation together and that our department is working hard for that. So.
They're not, they're not working.
Sorry. So just talking about what is an appropriate level of staffing for our police department and how can we. Adapt our services to what may come in the future is what we're going to talk about today. Our current staffing, we have seven full-time officers. That is including me. We don't have any administrative staff. Except for a warrants officer who also does all of our long-term investigations in cyber crimes and things of that nature, which I'll get to in just a moment. We do have part-time staff, but all those part-time officers you see listed do have full-time jobs. So getting them to come in and help us is very limited. Um, as far as what they're able to provide, but they do come in um, when we need them and we're very thankful to have those people available to us. So that's kind of what you're looking at as far as our current staffing, that was good. Uh, the overview of operations currently, just as of January one, we went to twelve-hour rotating schedule as far as shift scale. This allows the, the citizens to have twenty-four-hour police coverage. So an actual patrol officer that's on duty within the city limits and not just waiting for a call at their residence or something like that. So that was a big step in the direction that we've all wanted to work towards and so we were able to accomplish that with those provisions that we had last year and this, this past year as well. Um, our, our patrol shifts operate six AM to six PM, shift changes six AM and six PM. So that's when you would see a new officer come on duty and things like that. During the week, I'm obviously there. Uh, Sergeant Malone is there during the weekdays and then he fills in when the ships are new covered. And if someone's sick or we have someone out for training or something like that, that's where he comes up and playing floats as needed on his own call supervisor.
There, like you guys are in the police department.
It just varies. So sometimes he patrols, sometimes I patrol. It's, we fill in the gaps. Sure, absolutely. Our patrol staffing, um. Historically, we get that need and the information that helps us make decisions off of our CAD data. So what I'm going to show you is our annual uh, frequency of calls and call types. Those can be um. Different depending upon the needs and you'll see that on the next slide here in just a second. Um, things that we don't really look for. A lot of times departments will base things and staffing needs off of how many pub, how many people live in, within the city limits, uh, things like that. Yes, that has a factor, but the call type and the type of calls that we're receiving and the frequency of those calls are really where this comes into play. Some of the other things that you may see is changes as far as our staffing needs go is the amount of court and administrative duties that we undertake when we receive those. Um, national averages don't really apply there. I feel very unique for the demographic goes and the amount of area that we cover. Uh, with just one officer most often times. So that's very important to keep in mind when we're, we're making these staffing changes. You know, next slide. Officer presence and visibility is really the key to what we want to try to accomplish. So we want people to see that there's a law enforcement officer presence within the city limits to provide. That safety net. So prevents crime and it allows us to be more responsive to those things that um, catch a head on, so to speak. So. Stop in the bad guy before he does the bad thing. That's really what we're trying to accomplish. Um. I'm gonna put closer to this actually on this. This little screen. Um. So within our jurisdiction, we've mapped this out. It takes about an hour and twenty-seven minutes to cover every street within the city limits, but with one person right now, if they were proactively patrolling. Um, if that officer gets a call, maybe it's a high priority call, maybe it's a burglary, maybe it's something, you know, a vehicle crash or something like that. If they get a second call, then that call goes into a waiting queue. If it's high priority, we can have mutual aid come out. Or they'll call me or Sergeant Malone and we'll come out, but we're still coming from home. If we're available, we, one of us usually is. So that can increase that time to about twenty-four minutes. If that one officer that we have currently on duty is busy. So just keep that in mind. We're talking about statistics and the future. You know, the next slide. Reactive law enforcement. Uh, once an officer has been saturated with an incoming call, again, just like I said, those calls become stacked. And as calls for service increase, the probability of saturation increases exponentially. Once we get to that point and we start seeing that, which we have seen it on, I'd say probably a dozen occurrences over this past, you know, six months where. On a Friday or Saturday night, we might have a vehicle crash that's pretty extensive. So a DWI crash, we've had, I think, four or five of those. Where that takes hours to work and multiple units. So all of us are getting called in, we're getting overtime, we're getting. The night shift guys who are supposed to work the next day have to come in and help with that call. That stuff just kind of stacks up. And once we get to the point where that happens on a regular basis, a weekly basis, or even a bi-weekly basis, we start to see a downtrend in our abilities and. Or our capability to provide services to the level that we currently provide that. Our current call types, this is kind of where it gets into the things that I know that you guys might be interested in seeing. So feel free to stop me and ask questions if you have them. Um, one of the things that we've noticed over this past four or five month period is our investigations for long-term investigations has increased. So those types of calls that we weren't normally seeing as a more rural department now are becoming more frequent. So this is just a snapshot of what's pending right now. So I have a cyber crimes call, an investigation that's been going for nine months and it's probably going to take another three or four months to complete. Most of the work on that particular case has been done by our law enforcement support officer, Eric Velazquez, who is part-time with us. So. Thankful for him, but we really have a need for investigative. Uh, tools and a person that actually is willing and able to commit the full time to investigating these types of crimes. Um, we have another crimes against person that is being investigated and that's been about a six-month process. And then we have another cyber crimes call. An investigation that's kind of in our queue that isn't necessarily uh, high priority at this time, but it is, it is taking a lot of. Uh, our energy and resources to investigate these, these types of things that we normally wouldn't be seeing. Um, search warrants, things like that, where we find a situation that requires us to take action. Outside the normal patrol duties, you know, requires more probable cause and things like that. This stuff takes hours and hours and hours of somebody writing the search warrant before we can get. Uh, get the bad guy. So that, that is exactly what uh, I want you to understand is that it's not just. Going on patrol and writing tickets. There's a lot more that goes into running our police department and a lot more work that goes into that. So far, we've issued thirteen subpoenas just this year alone, which is pretty extensive for a small agency like this. And that happens when we try to retrieve evidence from, you know, Ring Doorbell cameras, Snapchat, Facebook, TikTok, things like that. That takes time. It takes a lot of time, a lot of effort on these, these officers, uh, and it takes them off the streak sometimes. So understand that. You can see the statistics from twenty-four to twenty-five. I didn't go back further than that, but I can, if you guys want to see that. But it's pretty significant. Um, RDWIs are up. Vehicle crashes are up significantly. Investigations, long-term investigations, something that takes more than a shift for us to, to cover. Those are up. Um. We've arrested, I think, forty-five persons this year so far. This time last year, we were at fifteen. So. An exponential increase in arrests for our jurisdiction, uh, and that does cost us money and time, evidence processing, all of that stuff. Is anybody having questions over these statistics? I'm sorry. Uh, I think it's a plethora of things. I couldn't really, I can't really say that we have an increase in one particular type of call. But I would say if there was one of those that sticks out to me, it's DWI accidents. I think we have a lot of uh, of that with the highways and the centralized location because you can get. To Cylon, Fayetteville, Springdale, Bentonville from, you know, all angles through here. So it's a, it's a good passer for a lot of traffic.
Especially a lot of air traffic.
Yeah, and, and that's true. We do have a lot of intoxicated drivers that are getting out planes. That happens a lot.
Uh, Blake, can I ask?
Yes.
On the previous slide, you had the, uh, you talked about stacked calls.
Yeah.
Do we know how often that happens? Is there a way to track it?
No, yeah, there is. And I can look that up. Um, but I would say significantly stacked when I mean, it's taken a couple of hours. For an officer to get clear of a call. We haven't ever had anything pending that long, but the potential for it to, if say, we had. Two or three things going on at once could occur. So I'd say it's been about, I would say a dozen times that I can remember over the past three or four months where. I was kind of holding my breath thinking, okay, I hope we don't get anything else that's going to require more because we don't have more to give. Um, and I think. Just understanding that we would provide that via mutual aid. So we do have good mutual aid partners, Centerton, you know, Gentry, the sheriff's office, they're always willing to come assist us, but that's if they're not busy. And everybody around here is becoming busy and they're understaffed. So our abilities to ask them to come assist us are also limited. Um, in that extent, but we have a good, we're working men and women that work for the police department. So we're very fortunate. That we don't have people who are non-motivated and we have good morale. Okay. When I call and say, hey, I need your help, they come. I don't have to beg, plead and borrow for these guys and gals to come help me. So whatever that means, we need to keep doing it. And I think that we're on the right track. It's just understanding that at some point, we can only do so much.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, so do you feel like the, the number of calls and like all the things you have listed here, like do, do you feel like these. Directly clearly in lineup based on our growth? Or do you think that they, like the crime is higher than how we think really? Does that make sense?
Um, I think it correlates with the population of North West Arkansas in general, because I would say. Eighty percent of these arrests that we've made aren't necessarily people who live here. They're passing through, they're, they're, they're traveling from one place to another. Um, especially the DWI crashes, things like that. That's, it's, it's hard to say. Um, but I would, the, the general population growth is going to al- always bring this type of increase. It's not anything for lack of. You know, doing something in particular, but being prepared for those incidents when they occur is really what my job is to make sure that you understand that.
And then our, our part-time police force, the people that get listed, what's the hour, average time they put to the city?
I would say.
If they have a requirement or they don't.
We don't have a requirement because they do have full-time jobs. It's hard for us to require that they come out. We set a minimum standard of eight hours a month, but a lot of times. Not able to provide that. So it just, to equal one part-time person that's giving us enough hours to cover the time that we need them to come out, it takes two or three of them, if that makes sense. You know, especially if we're asking them to cover a twelve-hour shift from like six P to six A, they might have to work the next day. So somebody else.
Of that, like, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is like the cost of us having um, part-time people. Who are or aren't putting in hours, you know, either way, um, what's the difference in, you know, does it, like the three people that we're, we're paying to have three part-time people? But they're not putting in the same hours the full-time person would be, but the full-time person would cost that amount. You see what I'm saying?
True.
Like the cost of us having full-time people that aren't putting in the time could be. What it would cost our city to put another full-time person out on the street.
Our current part-time rate of pay is twenty dollars an hour and it's about sixty thousand dollars to onboard a new patrol. So that's with. Benefits and everything included.
Yeah.
You know, that's a rough estimate. So I don't really know the best answer to that. Um, the part-time division.
Like I would like, like if, as a city council, as a citizen, I'd like to see, you know, we do have part-time. Officers like that cost money. Like it costs money for uniforms. It costs money for, you know, trainings or whatever they have, you know, I don't know, but whatever their requirements are. So we're spending that money to the city. If we're not seeing a return, it doesn't make sense to keep that when we could be putting like that money to, to be better prepared for a full-time officer.
True.
Because if we, if the need is there, but we're not getting the, something provided, that's more like trophy. Than more cost efficient for our town, I guess.
True. Um, and just to give you an idea of our part-time budget, it's twenty-seven thousand dollars. So. That's what we're spending outside. That's not including uniforms and training.
I would like to see, like personally myself, I would like to see what that correlates as, like the help they're giving the city.
Sure. We can look into that. Whatever you want, but it is for sure. Anything else about the statistics here on this page?
I love numbers. Um, so the traffic stops, you know, you know, a hundred percent increase recently there and so versus a year ago. And you, you know, the mayor said something I thought was important. I just go back to thinking about the conversations we've had in the legislations and stuff with X and A and about. X and A doesn't get into services of our city, you know, is one of the things that should hear them making the public media. Yet you're telling me you're having to stop drunken passengers out of X and A in our city so that they don't harm others throughout North West Arkansas.
That is great.
Yeah, how, how, I mean, up to five hundred and four, like, you know, how many of them are potentially intoxicated? I mean, how many of them come from airport really? I guess I'd be curious.
Um, you know, we would have to go back and review that, but I would say just based off of my firsthand knowledge, I would say. One out of every ten.
Yeah.
PWIs that we get, if not more.
Yeah.
And sometimes we don't find out because they just don't tell us where they were at.
They were just at, right?
I mean, we, we see that maybe they're from somewhere else. I mean, statistically speaking, it's not hard to figure out whether they're locally from North West Arkansas or they just flew in. You know, if it's a rental car, usually we know, okay, they went from airport. Okay. Um, so that's easy to figure out. But yeah, I mean, it's, it's significant. Um, and then the just other motor vehicle crashes too. So not DWR related. People who are unfamiliar with our roadways. They don't seem to want to obey a speed limit when they get in a rental car or they're from another state, you know, it's all the same, but they still come here crashing and, and do things that are. Outlandish. So it's, it's, it's unusual for sure. We have a different dynamic than most jurisdictions in that aspect.
Yeah, which meant that's what's so disappointing about the whole activity of X and A right now with their desire to de-anex on our city is that we still have the burden when they leave to take care of the citizens that come in or the passengers that come in out of the airport. With the kind of activity you're having to do, yet there's no desire to partner with our city to find, to find a way to collaborate, to move forward in a positive manner. So it's super disappointing, but. Thanks for enlightening us on how they actually import, import, does impact our city in a way that people don't really know about or didn't hear about.
Absolutely. And uh, you know, they all, they're all going to touch the city limits at some point, you know, whether or not they're coming or going from the airport. And that definitely impacts our services. And even if they. Crash out into the county that's a mile outside the city, our officers are first on scene most often times anyway. So, you know, when I say these statistics are, and, and our staffing needs and things like that, it impacts the general area of Highford. It's not just about. The citizens that live here, it's about our entire community. And I think that a lot of people don't necessarily understand that.
Yeah, it's kind of scary.
Our fire department and our police department is the first line of defense for. Most of Western Benton County, if you really want to look at it that way, especially if the sheriff's office isn't available, we're going. So it, it's important.
I think if, um, look at the data too, because these numbers, you know, the massive increase, like we said, we just started going through our shifts at the beginning of this year. So now we have people on the streets one hundred percent more at the time as well, not just, uh, you know, I think. Craig, if I'm wrong, we would do at least twelve hours a day and you'd be out patrolling when we did our twenty-four hour shifts. And then they'd be able to respond from home. Um, so when you increase your patrol a hundred percent, you're going to find more things to uh, investigate, pull over. And also think about with these DUI arrests, how many crashes we've mitigated that's left our city, happening in other cities when they try to go through here because. When they respond from home, I mean, I can, can't count how many times that uh. They would say, you know, hey, we got a possible drunk driver. Well, by the time we get to them, they're, I'll notify Gentry, I'll notify Benton County, notify Bentonville. Because they're already out of our jurisdiction by the time we get there. So.
Good point.
I think that uh, that's, that's one reason why these numbers have massively increased because we doubled our patrolling.
That's correct. I'm glad you brought that up. That's, that's.
I do think that is interesting, but and I, I mean, of course there would be that much growth. That makes sense. But it's also. The way I look at it is like, how many did we miss? You know, like they did go to other cities, like how many things that we. Not have by being a reactive police force or is it a proactive police force? I think that's a big deal to me. Like, I like to see, you know, law enforcement is meant to be service of our community. Not to be reactive of our community. So I, I mean, I'm glad that we did go ahead and make that change because it is like this is, that's kind of startling to think about. The growth that even X and A plans. Like that, it really affects us.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, more Blake. Let's see, it's, that's the slide.
Yeah, next slide. Um, one thing that increases again is administrative duties. Um, one thing that increases again is administrative duties. We don't have an administrative assistant. I do all that. So if it's an F O I request or a board request or a court document request, I'm doing most of that stuff. Me and Sergeant Malone are taking care of that stuff during the, the work week. So as well as helping with investigations, I patrol them. So there's a lot of things that go into that. Um, our court cases, anytime we make these arrests, we, we still have to see that through fruition through the adjudication process. So we're talking months and months and months of officers having to subpoena to court, things like that. Prosecutors having to ask for documents, attorneys asking for documents, things like that are gonna continue to increase. Um, yeah, basically, vehicle maintenance is huge as well right now. How does this impact us? Um, single unit response, this eliminates some of our options for use of force, so it puts more liability on the city where we have just one officer working. So if there are two or three of us showing up and dealing with an individual that may be violent, it's a lot safer for that person and us in the community versus just one person. That makes sense. Um, prior practice is not best practice. Calls which routinely were handled by a single unit now require two units or more to respond to. These vehicle crashes on two sixty-four and twelve, we can't do that with one person. We have to block highways, lanes, we have to divert traffic. We get secondary accidents if we don't do that, and that is a, a huge, huge deal. We have to take DWI cases all the way through to blow search warrants and take them to the hospital. It takes hours and hours to take one of those calls. Staffing concerns, um, and surrounding agencies, again, like I said, are also limiting our abilities to ask for those mutual aid officers to come help us. Most often times, they still will if they can. But there's a chance that they're gonna say, no, we can't, we don't have anybody. And it causes undue stress on all of our staff, um, when we're at the skeleton crew sometimes. So just keep that in mind in the future, you know, next slide. What is our main goal? We want to continue to provide the highest level of enforcement service that we can to the citizens of Hyphol. And I think we've been able to do that. Our agency does so much with the small staff that we have and even the, the, the budget that we have. Some people wanna look at Hyphol and say, well, you guys have this, this, and this. Well, it's because we've all been able to manage this in a way that I think is responsible. It, it may not look that bad from the outside looking in because we do have things that departments through times our size don't do, and the type of technology that we employ, but that's through grants, that's through the support of the council and the citizens that, that live here, and proving that it's valuable to public safety. And I think that's important to mention. Um, again, I plan to work with a few guys and the mayor to continue to see this through, and we'll work as hard as we can to make sure that we're taken care of here. Um, are there any questions about any of that statistically? And, and we can look into the, some of the things that you got brought up uh, to get a more microscopic view too, so. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Thanks, Chief.
Yes.
That's gonna be one on that. Yeah.
It, I shared it on Zoom, so you can see it on the recording later, the presentation.
Next item on the agenda is Arkansas legislation audit two thousand twenty-two and twenty-three financial compliance report. Tiffany, you want to come up, talk about this? Uh? Yeah. This is something that, that's just an audit that's done.
It's over about two or three years, like, audit will come out and just review our books and make sure that we are following codes. Um, depending on which auditor we get, they may guide us differently than the way the previous order has gone. Um, so the fixed asset one, they said I had the information, I just put the wrong spots, so they gave me training on it. And so that's no longer gonna be an issue. Also, our municipal representative reached out to me, goes, hey, I noticed this was an issue, why don't I come give you help? So I had him come out here, I showed him what the auditor told me, he goes, yep, the auditor told you right. So that issue was gonna be the one to care of. And then the other issue on there, because we had some fraud at the twenty-twenty-two, I pretty much, I monitor our accounting accounts almost daily to make sure that everything is accounted for. So that way, if someone should ever do this again, we catch it immediately. So we, so we make awesome, awesome.
Tiffany hit something right on the nail on the head. Uh, every time we get these audits, an auditor, we get a different auditor every time, and an auditor tells her how they want her to do it. And she does it exactly the way they want her to do it. And then the next auditor comes out and then writes her up for not doing it that auditor's way. And we talked to an auditor back here at, you know, uh, now Tiffany's, we're trying, we're starting to keep the notes of what these auditors are telling us because, it's like I told the auditor back here, like, it, it, it's getting old. Like, you guys are writing us up for stuff that you prefer it be done this way versus this is the law, and as long as we're doing it the, the way the law says, it doesn't matter if we're doing it your way or the, or this other person's way. You shouldn't get, you shouldn't get wrote up for it. So that's, Tiffany does everything to the book that the auditor tells her to do. And then when another auditor comes in, it's just totally different. So we're trying to, we brought it up to the, to the auditors, and I'm gonna pay attention to them. And, uh, if next year when we get another, next audit that happens again, I mean, we, we've got our notes this time, so. I just need a motion to accept these.
I'll make a motion.
Like some next motion.
Second.
Try a second.
Justin?
Yes.
Alexis?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Shy?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes, April two thousand twenty-five financial report. Am I got any questions or concerns about the financials?
There I just, my eyes are only drawn to one place where we can look at information that tells us X and A dollars. And I look at liquor tax revenue, and I see for the first three months of the year, from twenty-five, we were down fifty-six percent, fifty-five percent, fifty-six percent for January to March, and apparently, X and A passengers have decided to go dry and stop drinking when they go to the airport because we are losing revenue regularly, um, out of X and A's establishment. Unless all the bars are closed inside of X and A, I'm not really sure. Uh, but it doesn't stand to reason that our liquor tax revenue would be down fifty percent for the first three months of this year, each month. Given also, we have El Pobrito, which serves alcohol in our city. So things are, something doesn't add up.
We get El Pobritos, they're, they're almost, yeah.
So they, so they're a thousand dollars of the tech, well, a thousand dollars is all we got in Januaries, or are we getting, now the X and A doesn't give us any liquor tax and decide their choice. It's a state-funded process. It's supposed to be sent over to the DFA.
Well, so liquor tax is not. Liquor tax, correct me if I'm wrong, Tiffany, you come up here, uh, liquor tax is paid directly by the establishment to the city.
Okay, so the establishments get to choose, well, they shouldn't get to choose, they're legally obligated to pay it to us, but they're just not paying it to us. Is that what we should understand?
Well, since X and A filed their, uh, detachment clause, you know, we even got called by Department of Finance if they're even supposed to be charging sales tax anymore, paying the sales tax, and we had to. This, this law is so confusing that nobody knows.
So the merchants holding the escrow as well, in case the law comes back in our favor and they have to listen to money.
I think, I think Tiffany called, uh, did you call over there to the, the bar and ask them?
Uh, DFA reached out to me, wanted to know if we're still in there. And then, um, as far as the sales tax, they send us a, you know, okay, they send over our court saying this is how much tax you're getting based off of their sales. I have no way to verify whether or not their sales are true.
Right. No, he's, he's talking about the liquor tax.
Or she's saying that she, they send over a document that says, this is how much you're getting from our sales, and all we have to go off of is what they're giving us. So if they give us, say, our sales were only this much, we have no way to verify what their sales actually were, so we're just taking whatever they're giving us.
Uh, so liquor tax, we're talking about liquor tax and sales tax, they're two different things.
Yes. So the liquor tax, they will pay us directly.
Yes.
The sales tax goes to the state first.
Yeah, so the merchants from Paradise, I think is the name of the company over there, they've stopped paying Hyphol for the first thirty-nine, ninety days of this year.
I know, they, they, they give us much smaller sum than normal.
That's what she's saying. They're giving us a document that says, hey, this is how much we did in sales, so this is how much money you're getting.
Is there, is there any Freedom of Innovation Act that could about, could source their actual sales and tell us the truth, Jake? Be good. No. So there's no legal obligation for any business. So my business, I could choose some, pay something, but I choose not to. I don't understand how there's no legal obligation for tax audits.
The, the F and A does the tax audits. City does not have that authority.
So we complete the, the DFA, they need to do a tax audit of the merchants of X and A, make sure they're paying us the dollars you're supposed to pay us.
Sure. Hope, don't know that they would. Yeah, but say, will they even listen to us? Probably not. Cause they won't even give us the, the totals of what we get off the airport, so we can tell the difference between what comes off X and A versus what actually comes out of our city.
Such a corrupt system.
It is, very corrupt. And when you, when you go down to Little Rock and ask the senators to change it, especially our Senator Hester, they say no.
Yeah, we were there.
Yes, for the citizens that are in, then you don't have a report for any, but in twenty twenty-three, the month of January, we received thirty-four hundred dollars in tax revenue in liquor. Twenty-four, twenty-four, we received twenty-three hundred. Twenty-twenty-five, we got a thousand. It doesn't make any sense. We're going in the wrong direction. The airport's only reporting in public record, but they have highest traffic per pattern that never had. But yeah, somehow the tax dollars are missing. That's, I mean, we're talking a thousand dollars. I know it's not big enough to scoop them light, but that begins to question all levels of integrity in the system if you can't find truth in, in this moment. I'm certainly discouraged and frustrated. I, I've reached out to senators and I've reached out to the F and A myself on this very specific topic and been able to get no traction. It's something that our citizens should care about because it's, it's a lack of transparency in our government, that system. And I think writing our governor and writing our senators should be a continuous effort until we can find some way to fix this. Uh, it's only transparent because it's one tax that has historically, El Pobito, only come from X and A. So we knew for sure if we were getting our dollars or not, and apparently we're not.
Well, it's, it's our tax dollars. It should be accounted for. We should be able to get record of it, but the state allows to have records of.
And just for the citizens, I don't know how many have paid attention or seen what has been going on, or what we've been doing and going on in Little Rock. Um, we haven't made a lot of traction, we haven't made a lot of traction, but I do think like what he's saying, like, that is is important for us to get our voices loud, is important for us to call it into that. Because, you know, if things do continue that way, no matter how long we fight the good fight, Hyphol becomes no longer. So we'll have no city to fight for if we can't, we can't keep our voices loud and keep paying attention to this. And this is all, we, we provide it to public record. It's always on our website, it's always updated, everyone can always see our financials, see what our city's going through, see what our city spends money on. And so if, you know, if that is something that anybody would be interested in doing for you to go down to the city and, and sit with Tiffany and talk through those things, because there's a lot to be learned about, and the dollars is a shame.
Nothing else? I just need a motion to approve. Our records are accurate, not what the state sends us. It's totally different.
I mean, we approve it, for advice.
Justin makes a motion to approve. I'll seconds.
Justin?
Yes.
Alexis?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Shy?
Yes.
Uh, don't have anything on the mayor's report this month.
Uh, do some work for us, though. I mean, I, I think it's, yeah, we brought X and A out this point. I, I love for you to spend a few minutes just kind of telling us and the city, uh, citizens that are here, you know, kind of what the, what's gone on in the last sixty days and where journey's been and what, what we're facing now.
Oh, so.
But you can tell what's publicly allowed, we know.
Uh, so I'm sure everybody's read in the paper, uh, watched the news. Uh, we went to Little Rock again uh, to try to get the escrow part of the bill taken out. So the city, because when we went down there in twenty-three, X and A promised and told the senators and the senators that was sponsoring the bill, even said the same thing. We got it on the writing, it's in the minutes, they're recorded. I mean, they completely said it, hey, this is gonna be business as normal for Hyphol for the next fifteen, fourteen, fifteen years, whatever. That's how long till our bonds are paid for. So Hyphol's not gonna lose no money, they're not gonna take any money away from us, it's just gonna be business as normal. So Hyphol have that timeframe to start growing and, and bring businesses in to, to get new revenue. And that's what the senators told us to do. So do you need to go back there and start getting new revenue? So we did. We come back and, uh, we've got businesses, we've got El Pobrito, the brewery, uh, Dollar General, uh, working on, Sonic's coming in, hopefully it'll be built twenty-six. Um, and then we're, I'm still trying for a grocery store, you know, all, all these other businesses. And, uh, the law basically says that our sales tax gotta be escrowed. Well, X and A started pushing that issue, trying to take over, escrow all of our sales tax. So we went back down to Little Rock and, uh, Senator Love, which is a Little Rock senator, he done this really good. Like, he, he straight up asked X and A if that was the intentions, was the, the intentions, the, at the very beginning was to escrow all the sales tax and just lead us in a wrong way. Uh, basically, that's, that's what, I mean, that's what's happening. Is that X and A didn't, they didn't tell the truth. They let everybody in one direction while they were doing something different. Uh, so we lost that battle. Uh, our Senator Bar Hester, he, he petitioned hard, which is the Senator for Hyphol, uh, to kill that bill to, to not help Hyphol. He would not help us at all. Uh, he was completely against us, I guess. So, um.
Senator Penzo created a new, new bill recently, which took us down there.
Senator, Senator Penzo, which is a, which is Springdale and Tawny Town Senator, which is not our Senator, but he recognized that they made a mistake on passing a bill, and he tried to correct that mistake. And, I mean, so he, he's, Senator Penzo has been, I mean, he helped, he helped us tremendously. Uh, he bent over backwards for us, he done everything he could. He got scrutinized down there by the Arkansas, Northwest Arkansas delegates up here, Bar Hester, Senator Bryant, uh, representatives, Bentonville representatives and stuff. Uh, but Penzo stood tall and he took them on the chin and, and still moved forward when it was helping us. Uh, and we're just, there was just too much against us. So we lost that battle down there. So now, right now, we're fighting for.
Well, actually, there was a piece where we, there was a negotiation that happened that went during that time.
Oh, yeah.
With X and A, which has been publicly put out by X and A about a, a, a new offer that was promoted.
So we made a, we, we had agreement down there, we made agreement that out of the one point eight million dollars that we would get, receive nine hundred thousand of it. And then our bonds will be paid for, our bonds will be paid for, and then on top of what our bonds are, which our bonds are six hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. So.
They're dead.
And what's on top, on top of that, we would receive nine hundred thousand dollars. Which that would operate our city. It wouldn't, I mean, it wouldn't made it, we're struggling about to operate our city, but with our sales tax being escrowed, because the council's done a really good job of, uh, making a conservative budget. We've, we've, we've done a good job at that. So we're, it's just gonna be tight for the next, if this thing passes, if we can't win the battle, it'll be tight for Hyphol for the next three and a half, four and a half years until the bonds are paid for. So we made that agreement, X and A board passed, uh, made the agreement, council passed the same agreement. Uh, the X and A executives and stuff, from the time it got to the lawyers and made it to our lawyer, it was Hyphol would receive nine hundred thousand dollars, and the bonds would come out of that. If there was any money left, we'd receive it. So it was just a good old bait and switch. Uh, so which, it's in the newspaper, you know, Senator Hester, we cornered him down a little rock and and asked him, you know, cause he quoted the same deal that, you know, our bonds would be paid, nine hundred thousand dollars, Hyphol would receive it. And then he's like, yes, that's what I said. And then X and A said this, then he switched his tone back to X and A. So uh, I'm just really down on, on some of the senators and our legislation people around here. Uh, but if you guys don't know Senator Penzo, if you, if you ever run into him, I know he ran against, uh, Congressman Womack. But Senator Penzo is a, he's a, he's a class act. He's one of the very few, uh, politicians out there that's honest, and when he makes a mistake, he'll, he'll own up to a mistake and he'll try to fix that mistake. So if you guys ever run into Senator Penzo, tell him, hey, you're a citizen of Hyphol and you appreciate everything he done for us.
I just wanna build on a little thing to say, because there's some details that may not make sense. You're not part of it all, and I'm starting to build into, to the mayor. A little bit of, so the mayor represented our city with Senator Penzo, several other senators, and the chief CEO of X and A to come up with this deal that you referenced, where we would have roughly, we'd get about two million dollars a year currently in sales tax coming from all the establishments within the X, in, in the Hyphol, El Pobito, and the airport, et cetera. And so the deal was, okay, we will let you pay your, your bonds, it's six hundred thousand dollars, and you'll still have nine hundred thousand, as the mayor just stated. That was the handshake deal they made in Little Rock that night. We all have to come back and do the, the paperwork, if you wanna call it that, to make it happen. And so X and A board voted, I think, the following day, um, for, I forget what they call it, an order, I believe, is what they call theirs. And it was, he, it was stated to the entire X and A board, the same verbal thoughts that I'm saying to you now. And what was said to the mayor is that the city of Hyphol will have nine hundred thousand dollars to free, clear to go run their city, on top of paying their bills. That was what was sold to the X and A board at that meeting. I went to the meeting to listen, as, as just a citizen of the community. Um, so the board. Um, so the board members voted under that assumption. A legal document gets written after that moment. They didn't have a legal document to look at at that moment. And then, uh, that was passed over to our legal team, which is Jay, as well as we have outside counsel in, in Little Rock that helps us with this as well. Because this is pretty sophisticated matters for all of us and we're making sure we've got all the right eyes and ears on it. When they passed that over, it was as the mayor stated, not what was the handshake deal. It, it basically said, it, because there's very specific bond language stuff. I don't ignore the bond as time like that. Just, we're, we're, we're just regular people like you. But there's very specific language that matters in, in the document that says how money can be spent in the city. There's a protocol and this dollar has to come before this dollar, et cetera. And so when that was put in front of lawyers, they're like, oh no, what, what this thing says is that you actually don't get that nine hundred thousand dollars. You actually have to use that nine thousand dollars to pay the six fifty. And so we're left with, say, let's say two fifty thousand left, to run our city, which is not what the agreement was in the room with the senators. It wasn't what the board of X and A heard, voting to them, not what Senator Bar Hester heard as well. And so we advised not to pass that, not to accept that order, but to write our own order that matched with the verbal agreement was. That's what the city council voted on and did. One of the last things that, um, that Jack Lloyd did on, on behalf of this council, somebody who passed away, was to vote for that to per, um, the resolution that we created. And all that needed to happen was for X and A to say, oh, we made a mistake in our, in our, what we wrote. That's what we didn't realize the language had to be different. We made a mistake and they could have just accepted our resolution. Yet they have not done so. They have gone to the papers and made it sound as though, your mayor, our mayor, or our city council, or some, that somehow we're just in at, you know, country bumpkins and don't know what we're doing. When we actually have a lot of really smart people helping us do all this work. And, um, it's, we've, we've been nothing but collaborative, coming to the table, transparent, just wanting to honor the deal we said. Now, if you ask me as a council member, I think I've said it to the mayor myself, it's like, nine hundred thousand dollars, we shouldn't ask for more. I don't, I don't know, we, we're getting the best deal of nine thousand deal, but we are people of our word in the Hyphal city. And the mayor said he would do it. And I went on to vote for the resolution to do it, even though I thought we should probably ask for more. But that doesn't matter. We are people of our word and we'll do what we say we'll do. That's what the mayor continues to do and has done. There's so much that I guess the city doesn't get exposure to, what the work the mayor's doing on your behalf and our, on our behalf to try and fight for us and actually stand up for what is truth and honor, in the government system that we have here. Um, the bill is still, is, there's, the original bill passed in twenty-three is still there. It is still requiring at the moment that all tax dollars, not just Hyphal's.
Council, council member, let, let's not get into what the bill requires. It's disputed, it's presently in litigation.
That, that's okay. Thank you, sir. Um, but there's, there's, right now, there's this, the, the idea that, you know, every tax dollar, regardless of whether it's, um, you know, the Hyphal, X and A or not, is, is supposed to be, considered into a, not, not be able to be spent by us, or something like that at the moment. Um, that said, the mayor's gonna need to fight for our city. And I just think it's important that public record be known that, whatever you hear in the media is a different point of view. The media is not telling the side of Hyphal. We only see the side of X and A in the media. And I, I think it's important you ask questions, critical questions, have our leaders throughout the city and throughout the country, throughout the state, to get to a better place and what's. I'll stop.
Thank you, Justin. All righty. Yeah, and anytime if, if anybody's got any questions about X and A, I mean, you can call me. Uh, well, I'll explain anything to you that you wanna know, uh, bring you up to date on it. So, uh, my phone's always there if you wanna talk. Uh, so we got the Hyphal annual community cleanup. It's.
Yes, the, the lawyer that we voted to hire in California somewhere.
Yeah, the bankruptcy.
What is his purpose? Why are we hiring a lawyer in California? See a bank? I mean, uh.
Specializes in city bankruptcies.
Okay.
We're hoping we don't need it.
Okay.
So Hyphal annual community cleanup, Wednesday, May twenty-first through Saturday, April twenty-fourth, twenty-fourth. The city hall, the dumpsters will be right here in the parking lot. So if you guys got anything you wanna throw away, bring it up here. Uh, we got a planning commission meeting Tuesday, May twenty-seventh at six, here at the council chambers. Uh, next city council meeting will be Tuesday, June tenth at six P M. Uh, don't forget about Chicago ball, uh, June fourteenth here at the city park. It's to raise money for National Night Out, which is, uh, for the police department. Uh, so I have my own team. I think Dustin has his own team. I'll probably throw my back out, maybe throw a knee out at the same time. Uh, but, uh, it'll be, it's gonna be a fun time. It's gonna be a, a fun family event. So, you guys, uh, bring your kids up and I guess you'll get a good laugh at trying to watch me run or something.
Oh, we're gonna have a team. That'll be Kyle.
Yeah. Counsel's gonna have a team. Uh, the registration fee is, is ten dollars. We're, we're just doing six teams. This is the first year we're doing it to see how it, uh, see how it kind of works out and stuff. So, uh, if you want a team.
Mayor, this is, uh, is putting a team. We're just missing a couple more people, so.
Yeah, you got Kyle.
All right. Kyle, you wanna be on our office team?
I suppose so.
Yep. Sounds good. Uh, so yes, if you got a team, you wanna be on it, just contact Tiffany in the office. She can get you the information for it if you guys, sounds like something you'd be interested in. Uh, or you can just, say that you're willing to play and if we need.
Baseball.
Yeah. Well, it's a big old soccer ball thing. Like a dodgeball. You have to hit with the bat. There's no glove.
It's like the idea of baseball, though, with the giant ball.
I've, I've never seen it. I've watched YouTube videos. It sounds, it looks like it's gonna be fun. So, all right, council got anything?
Shy, you counted Justin in, right?
Oh, no, I don't know. Someone had to mention and what asked the questions, and maybe for the person record, that we could get a pickleball court at our city park. Random thought, voices of citizens throwing out that.
I'd love it.
Would you?
Yeah, I've never played it before, but it's, it's good. Yeah. Yeah. It's like, it's like ping pong, isn't it?
It's a tennis court.
Except on a big court. Yes.
So it's like tennis.
Yes, I love, I love ping pong. Uh, it'll actually be passed by us. So I mean, if you guys want me to, I can go out and, because we got some money in the, in actual park account. I can go out and try to find specifications and, get some bids on some.
I know it's every, every kid's been there. Now, actually, it's a lot of my parents are doing it.
Yeah. Well, you don't, you actually, you actually don't have to run that much. It's a lot less running than tennis.
Is it pickleball?
Yeah, it's pickleball.
We just invented a new game.
Yeah. But yeah, I'll, I'll go out and try to get some information, some numbers for you guys. Yep. Uh, council got anything else? I just need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Oh, shy did you, Justin.
Justin?
Yes.
Alexis?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Shy?
Yes.